So lay down there, I don't see her.
Live now, on Facebook.
Can you see it on Facebook already?
Yeah, you're there.
Yeah.
I can see it.
Okay, perfect. I can't see it yet, but then if it's on there, that is good. And it should be in gallery view.
Yep, it is.
Okay.
Welcome to the May 12th, 2020 council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan? Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan?
She's on mute.
Sorry, here.
I almost did that. Councilmember Aubrey?
Here.
Councilmember Laquiro?
Here.
Councilmember McFaul?
Here.
Okay, it takes us to the approval of the agenda, council. I'll move approval of the agenda.
Second.
A discussion of the agenda before we approve it. Ascension, we have an agenda, thank you. Takes us to special presentations, a proclamation declaring the first Friday of June to be gun violence awareness day. I, Mayor Michael Webb, Hazel Park's mayor, proclaim the first Friday of June to be gun violence day awareness. Number two would be the proclamation declaring May 2020 as mental health awareness month. I also declare May 2020 mental health awareness month. Thanks to civic announcements, anyone have any civic announcements?
You say we have one more.
Yeah.
A proclamation declaring May 2020 is Williams syndrome awareness.
And another proclamation declaring May 2020 as Williams syndrome awareness month. I didn't get the memo. I also declared that. Any announcements, anyone from the public having any civic announcements? From the city council, any civic, oh, we've got someone who lives in right corner.
Barbara. Sorry, Barbara. I want to thank, good, thank you, how are you, mayor? I want to thank you and the council for approving the first Friday in June as a gun awareness month. We are facing, there was a situation and it's amazing that we are doing something to stop gun violence in the United States. Thank you one more time.
Thank you.
It's Barbara.
Anyone else with civic announcements from the public? Seeing no one from the city council, do you have any civic announcements?
Amy? I do. So the arts council, we had our monthly meeting last night, one of the topics was the Hazel Park art fair. As we know, a lot of events have been canceled in our neighboring communities. Madison Heights, Ferndale, Royal Oak, Berkeley. So we discussed with COVID-19 and everything that's been going on, if we were going to continue to have the Hazel Park for this year. And we did have a vote and we've decided that we're going to be canceling the art fair for this August. But we are going to be looking to develop some alternative plans that can encompass things like social distancing a little bit more easily, but still to support the artist in the community. So hopefully we'll have some more details about that coming soon. And we will have a formal, some formal announcements and more information going out online in the coming days. So it's very unfortunate, but we felt it was the best thing to do at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other civic announcements from council? And a close civic announcement to open up the public discussion, anyone wishing to speak from the public?
I would like to.
Go right ahead.
This is Pastor Scott from Salvation Temple Church. Hello, everybody.
How you doing?
Oh, pastor.
Doing well, doing well, getting better and better. But listen, I have a question of concern that I would want, I don't know if you've talked about it or whatever the case may be, but it relates to the, I suppose it's 5G, this radiation issue from the cell towers. There's one right at the back of our parking lot and then one across the street on the 10 mile area. Are you aware of that or do you have any concern about the radiation that comes from those towers?
I'm not aware. We're getting updates from the Michigan municipality pastor on this particular issue right now, thanks to legislature. Cities have very little ability to regulate these things. Most of our regulatory authority has been stripped away from us by the state legislature. So I suggest that you contact representatives in Lansing above this issue. We're kind of keeping an eye on it. Right now, the science is still out on some of this stuff. So we're continuing to monitor the latest research on this, but we don't have a lot of ability to regulate that here.
Okay, well, I'll make the contact, but do you mind if I come back and let you know what I find out or share with you any information that I come up with?
We'll be happy to listen to anything that you've got to say anytime, pastor.
Bless your heart. So because there was, for example, there was one guy who used to work for the sale company. And he's got this little meter, this little meter thing that measures radiation in the particular areas. And there are certain locations inside of our church building where the meter shows that the radiation levels are very high. And I just wanted to find out if there's any information that you all have so that if there's something that I need to do to get in front of this to protect the people in our congregation when we get back to meeting and stuff like that. So thank you for your update. I'll make the contact or so and keep you informed, okay?
Thank you, pastor.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you. Anyone from the public? Seeing no one, we'll close public discussion. Oh, go ahead, Jesse.
Okay, I didn't have much. I just actually had some, unlike prepared comments, I just had some commentary about what's been going on. You know, something a bit more positive. Um, I, two things that I've been noting of late. I'm noticing that the number of, of active infections in our state has actually stabilized and appears to finally be decreasing. Um, which is actually somewhat good news. I mean, we're not out of the woods yet, but it's progress. And I actually wanted to comment on something that happened back on Friday. Um, thanks to leaders and I believe with the Hazel Park School District operate a monthly mobile food bank. That happens usually on the last Friday of every month, although in this case it was held on the first, so actually over a week ago, sorry. Um, and this last time there was more people than I'd ever seen there. And fortunately, we're able to actually get them all, everything. So there is places to get help if the, you know, in these trying times. And we're doing all we can to try to make things better for everybody else. It's a really dark time right now, yes, but there is some light to be found. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and did I need to state my name and address?
Yes, please.
Okay, Jesse Robertson at, and I'm broadcasting from 23353 Hoover Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Barbara.
I didn't state my address. Do you need my address as well?
You can state it for the record, we can probably find it, but go ahead.
All right, my name is Barbara Winter, 23051 Towas Avenue.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? One, twice, three times, we close public discussion. Approval of the consent agenda as presented, council, hey, do you have a motion? I'll move approval of the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
A discussion. Ascension. Hearing no one. Motion passes. Minister reports?
Mr. Mayor, we have no administrative reports?
Reports and commissions, none. Tabled items, none. New business, new business. We'd like to set up a council meeting for next Tuesday.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the administration, either next Tuesday or another day next week, if Tuesday is impossible for folks. But we do need to begin to process some of these applications for marijuana licensure. And we'd like to begin that process next week.
Council, see anything wrong with that?
No.
I'm checking my calendar.
No.
Everybody's calendar look good?
Yeah, sorry, I've got lots of calendars and we have a lot of evening meetings. So far, I appear to be available.
Okay, seven o'clock next Tuesday.
Why don't you guys want to do six instead?
Six is fine. Six, okay.
That works for me.
Everybody's good with six, okay. Six o'clock then.
Now, like, there's a lot of places to be going out to dinner at.
Let me ask you another question. The next regular scheduled meeting in two weeks. Would we like to have an actual meeting here with our face mask on?
We're, we're, I personally prefer not to. We're allowed per executive order to continue doing this through the end of June, and I would prefer to do that.
Same.
Okay.
I think the nice thing about this as well is that it gives more people the opportunity to attend safely and conveniently. They don't even have to put on pants. They can come.
We're not wearing pants here.
Just don't stand up on camera.
Okay, any comments from department heads?
Wait, I had some new business, Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry, Andy, go ahead.
Mike McFaul and I have been, you know, designated to work with the school board about historical museum. And I'd like to propose that we add a school board member as a member to the historical commission.
Is that, is that, is that in their, is that okay with their bylaws?
Well, we probably really, we'd have to have our administration look at it and then run it by them to, for them to accept. Well, but I, well, there's a few things, you know, the, the, the school district predates the city of Hazel Park. So it'd be ideal to have a working relationship with them and just kind of solidify that.
That's fine. The only reason I ask is because we also have bylaws, we have to follow the certain commissions that we can set on the subway camp.
Right. Like we, um, you know, when, when the, it's not, it's similar, but it's not the same. When the library was changed to a district library, the school board member was added to the board.
Okay.
So I'm just proposing this together closely, we're leasing a building with them. They have a lot of history and it would be great to use it for students.
That's good.
Councilmember, is this, again, are we, we doing this to kind of resolve our unresolved issues with the district with respect to that building? It's going to be part of a larger, broader proposal that, the counter proposals that we're going to make, obviously, we're aware of what the district proposed. Again, the administration, obviously, and legal team has some issues with that because it's somewhat intangible. So is there any further that you'd like to elaborate now or just wondering what your thoughts are? Well, it is, it came about through the discussions that we had with Laura and Laura Adkins, Sue Hempel, and their attorney when we were all meeting at City Hall. We were, Mike McFaul, city manager, and I and a couple of city attorneys. This idea came up from Sue Hempel. And I figure first it's got to come through city council. So it's, I mean, it's, it's part of, part of a just making more communication, you know, solidifying the relationship. Go ahead, Amy, I hear an Amy question.
Yeah, I've, I've got a question and a comment. Um, so just for clarification, are you proposing that it would be a school board member or an appointment by the school board?
It'd be a school board member.
Member? So I want to express my support for this idea because the schools are a part of the city's history. Regardless of, of any issues that we've had regarding the, the Erickson Building lease or anything. I think this is a fantastic idea to incorporate the schools into the historical commission. Kind of broaden that knowledge. So I would be supportive of the administration working on exploring how to amend the ordinances and work with the schools to make sure everything gets updated cooperatively to, to make this addition.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we'll just bring you back then. An amendment to the historical commission ordinance at the next meeting providing for one member of the historical commission to be a member of Hazel Park.
Yeah.
A member of the school board, the school board of education being a member of the historical commission. Right.
Okay. That's all I had. Any other new business? Close new business. Communications from department heads?
Listen. I know we don't have any department heads giving any, anything, but and I, I texted this to Ed earlier and we've been getting a lot of semis coming up from Eight Mile to Hughes, up Hughes. It's almost daily. And I would like to see a little bit more patrolling of the, of the semis that are driving up our, through our neighborhoods before they start tearing up the streets. I know, I know the chief's not on here, but.
I said this afternoon, evening. Andy Laquero texted me about five minutes before you did, Mike. And we're aware of it and I've already texted the chief of police and he's made the road patrol aware of this situation. So hopefully we'll be able to step up enforcement and begin to write some tickets.
Great, thank you.
It almost seems like it's, um, uh, Google Maps or somebody's sending them this way.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
And when somebody turns on to Harding, it can't do anything but go forward. It can't turn anywhere else back up. And once it's on and realizes it's a, I'm not, I'm defending them in a way, but it's still got to stop. But it's like almost Google Maps or Google Earth or somebody's sending them this way.
Yeah, again.
Take them up to Quinder to Woodward Heights. That way. What's happened is the service drive now is being shut intermittently for construction purposes. So they get on their, their Google tells them the service drive is open, there's no service drive. They end up on Russell and Hughes and sometimes Merrill. And they end up then on Harding and Hoover and Hughes crossing through there instead of going down to Quinder at Eight Mile, which is where they need to go. So we'll make Amazon aware of that again tomorrow, we'll contact them and the chief of police, I guess, that will instruct the road patrol, issue more tickets and the patrol in that area. But it is like, it's daily. It's probably two or three a day, it seems. If I'm sitting out there, I, you know.
Maybe, maybe if we propose putting some signs that says no semis and on Hughes and Russell off, coming from Eight Mile and maybe over there coming up the service drive where they are cutting them off. Maybe we can try to tell them, you know, no semis, it may help as well. Every little bit we do can help.
We'll post some more signs too. I'll talk to Tom to him and see if he can't post some signs. Say no semi traffic. And maybe all semis, even though they're not allowed, must turn right on those crossroads.
Okay, communications to the city attorney.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, city manager.
Yeah, I wish I didn't have anything to say, but you know, I've been saying that Michigan system of municipal finances fundamentally broken at every city council meeting for, you know, more than a decade. And we've been warning the state that if they didn't make changes in that system, that the next time there was a shock to the system, there was a possibility of a wave of municipal bankruptcies across the state. Unfortunately, nobody at the legislature listened to us. And now, uh, this isn't just a wolf at the door, this is a pack of wolves. The coronavirus is going to have, and the ensuing shutdown of businesses is going to have an extraordinarily long tail of misery and economic destruction. And this is going to impact the funding of local communities and our ability to provide services. Remember, we only get about 50% of the revenue that we need from property taxes. We also get a significant amount of our revenue from revenue sharing from the state of Michigan, which is based on a share of sales tax that's collected. There hasn't been a lot of sales tax collected in the past couple of months because of the shutdown. So again, this is going to be devastating for local communities. The plan in place is to hope that the federal government will provide yet one more stimulus package. This one targeted for states and municipalities and local units of government, counties, cities, villages, townships. Units of government actually provide the services and maintain civilization. And I'm hopeful that this will happen, but there's no guarantee that this will happen. When we asked our leaders at the state, well, what's the plan? The plan is, well, go lobby hard for this bailout for local units of government. And again, we're doing that. Anybody watching this, uh, you know, our congressman, Andy Levin, has kind of got a point in the House on shepherding this legislation through the House of Representatives. That's not where our trouble is. Our trouble is in the United States Senate where it's going to be much more difficult for us to get something like this through. So again, contact your representatives, especially if you have family in other areas that might happen to have Republican representation. Please speak with them, let them know how important this is to lobby their representatives for the passage of this legislation. Because if we don't get a bailout, this is going to be an extraordinarily long hard slog that's going to require reductions in employees, limited, you know, elimination of some services. This is going to be every bit as bad as 2008 was. So again, I know there's some pent up demand. As soon as things reopen, I'm hoping that there's enough pent up demand that it would bounce the economy and minimize and mitigate some of the negative impacts that we've had. But unfortunately, if I had to guess, I would bet that it's going to be a slow ramp back up in terms of consumer confidence and things like that, even when everything is open. So there's going to be a long tail for this. So it's very important that our representatives in Washington DC pass this assistance for local units of government. I can't stress that enough. You're going to be getting a budget. That budget this week will be something that will have to be amended at some point when we have a more clear picture of the true impact of the lockdown and coronavirus, what that cost. So again, never seen anything like that, worrying on Saturday. But I always brag about how resilient Hazel Park is and how creative we are and how we can come through anything. So we're going to be tested one more time and we need to answer the bell and we need to find a way to see ourselves through that. So I'm sure working together we'll do that, but in the meantime, we need to lobby Washington DC higher. But we need to be prepared to cope with whatever happens. Wish I had more cheering, better news for us, but at least the weather man says the weather is going to get better this week. So that's all, the only good news that I have for you tonight. So I thank you, look forward to meeting with you and working with all of you and with the residents of Hazel Park to find a way to see us through this crisis. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilperson McFaul?
I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. Every Monday and Friday, the YMCA is handing out food at the Hazel Park Rec Center from 4:30 to 5:00, and that's for kids. So you can actually just pick up the food in the parking lot. And that's every Monday and every Friday from 4:30 PM to 5:00 PM. I also wanted to bring up that we have started a fund through Main Street Oakland County as a member community of that. We're trying to raise funds to support our businesses that have been impacted by shutting down. As of right now, we're at about $6,500. Our goal is 10,000. And there is a, a match from the county of $4,000, which we've already hit. So we can add the $6,500 to the 4,000. But I would like to keep pushing forward because the more money we raise, the more businesses we can help. You can find more information on that, that was in the, the city's newsletter. It's also on Facebook. The link is kind of long, so I'm not going to bother with that. But if you go onto Facebook, onto Main Street Hazel Park or on the city's Facebook page, it's been shared on there. Or feel free to reach out to me directly. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilperson Aubrey?
Um, I wanted to thank everybody that was able to join us for the meeting today. Wanted to thank council for passing the proclamation regarding gun violence awareness day. As somebody whose family has been directly affected by gun violence, I think it's very important that we preserve people's rights while also finding ways to protect people as well. So I wanted to thank everybody for that. Just a reminder to everybody, as Jesse was kind enough to point out, on the statistics regarding COVID-19 are starting to stabilize. We've started to see some, some downward trajectory with a few spikes here and there. It doesn't mean we're, we're out of, out of the danger yet. So please continue to practice social distancing, be respectful of people's personal space at the grocery stores, the one-way aisles. Do your best. The more cooperative we work together as a community, the faster we can start to, you know, see our businesses reopen. And I hate to say the new normal, but we can start to find out what that new normal is going to be moving forward. So I appreciate everybody doing their best, wearing masks, practicing social distancing and everything that they can do. If there's anybody that needs assistance with unemployment or every, or anything, I do want to give a shout out to Senator Jeremy Moss as well as Representative Robert Wittenberg, who I've turned to, to refer, refer multiple constituents. And they've been able to help them with a lot of issues. So they have a lot of direct resources with the state unemployment agency office. So if you need any assistance, please reach out to them directly. Feel free to reach out to myself as well. My email is aaubrey@hazelpark.org and I can try to connect you to some of those resources or direct you to where to find some of that. So people who are still out of work, we can help. Just a reminder, the, the donation site for small businesses is fantastic. But remember, some of our businesses are still doing curbside service, carryout service. So there are other small ways that you can support our businesses directly. Maybe, you know, we're all used to, at least I'm cooking at home a lot more, but we're still trying to eat out a couple of meals a week to support our local businesses and do curbside for any, any items we need to purchase instead of purchasing through Amazon. So thank you, everybody, for your support with this moment. With this crazy situation, I'm just going to call it crazy, it's just this crazy situation. So, and I hope everything, everybody's doing well.
Amy, if I could.
I have one more thing.
You said, go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead. I was just going to say, I forgot to mention that it may is Williams syndrome awareness month, which is why we brought the proclamation to declare it Williams syndrome awareness month here in Hazel Park. If you'd like to learn more about Williams syndrome, you can visit williams-syndrome.org to learn more about it. Thank you.
Yeah, just to piggyback on something that Amy said, the importance of trying to support our local businesses during this mess is that our tax structure in this state is very antiquated. And we don't derive really any revenue at all from delivery services, but we derive a lot of property taxes and value from our brick and mortar businesses. And that's why it's important that we patronize our local businesses and keep them viable and keep them up and running because if not, that'll depre- because if not, that'll depress property values and we'll have, we'll be hit again. So it'll be a synergistic hit to us like it was in 2008. And again, the more hits that you take, they compound, and the harder it is to climb your way out. So in the absence of the state legislature doing anything important with respect to revamping the tax system and passing a tax system that is fit for 2020 instead of something that was originally passed in 1890 something, we need to make sure that our local businesses remain viable. Plus, I think they really add to quality of life in the city, and they add to a fabric of the community that we really need to preserve. So thanks for pointing that out, Amy. And Mike, thank you for doing all that you're doing with respect to raising money for, to support our local businesses. It's just critical. We got to get these folks through this crisis. The light, I can see the light at the end of the tunnel, and we'll be reopening, and we need to make sure that these folks are able to reopen successfully and as fast as possible.
All right, Councilman Lucero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if any other municipalities had a resolution going around in support of some relief for municipalities, or we should put one together to circulate, or would it be just?
A good idea.
A waste of time.
You just authorized the administration to draft a letter, and we'll draft a letter, and we'll have all of you sign it as opposed to waiting for another week to do a resolution, so we can get that off to our elected representatives. We're pretty fortunate here in Hazel Park that our elected representatives at every level of government get this, okay? Our problem is that we're doing, this is a national bailout that we're going to need help and assistance with, and there are changes statewide that we're going to need help and assistance with that will require folks from areas that aren't quite like ours to cooperate with us and to see the extent of the problem. So I'd like to get the letter out sooner rather than later. We'll get that written. We'll get your signatures on it, and we'll try to get it out as fast as possible.
Go ahead, Andy. Any more?
And I just would repeat, support the local restaurants. I've had the Doug's Delight, the dip sandwiches and Sham Rocks and Country Boy. And so, too bad Louis isn't open. I've had Pie's Thai too, but too bad Louis isn't. Thanks for everybody.
I heard they were remodeling, Andy.
Ah, okay.
Good time to remodel.
Take advantage.
That's a good job.
Yeah. Have a great night.
You good, Andy?
I'm good. Thanks.
Hey, Andy, thank you for your volunteer work at the Rapid Test Center too. That's awesome.
Yeah, thanks. Kara's doing that three days a week.
Well, happy birthday to Kara and happy birthday to Amy Aubrey as well. Yeah.
Oh, happy birthday.
I was muted. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Cool.
Mayor Pro Tim Sullivan.
Um, I, my first thing was to wish Kara and Amy both happy birthdays. So happy birthday. I want to thank everybody again for coming out. I know this is a different kind of experience for us, but I do appreciate everybody participating. And I, I wanted to give a little thank you to Melissa Schwartz and Jennifer Thomas this week. We had some conversations and some meetings about our animal control ordinances, and then we just re-upped our contract with Oakland County Animal Control. And I think that we have some great things coming in our animal control ordinances moving forward. Things that will make our community safer, that will make our pets safer, and I think it's really great, and I'm really grateful to be a part of that. I wanted to also touch base on the Facebook page that we just started, the honoring our heroes Facebook page. Because we've had to cancel our Memorial Day activities, we're looking to do both an interactive as well as a virtual celebration of our fallen heroes. And we've started this Facebook page with the hopes that people will join and then share photos of their, their passed away loved ones, because Memorial Day is about honoring those that have passed. And then also, we're hoping to print out copies of these photos that you could pick up, and we're hoping that people will put these photos in their windows at their homes so that we have, you know, a visual reminder of the people that we've lost and of the sacrifices that were made, and really, you know, getting back to the spirit of Memorial Day, which is honoring those veterans that we've lost. And then hopefully, you know, showing our gratitude for the sacrifices they made to, to help us get to where we are today. I wanted to tell everybody to keep an eye out online. We do have the city website, as well as myself, and I believe other council members as well are listing on local food pantry, food pantry options. I know I'm posting those almost daily at this point, and we have a lot of opportunities for those here in, in the city and in surrounding communities. You don't always have to be a member of the city where it's being distributed. So that's a great opportunity for people who are really struggling at this point. And reiterate Amy's comment about if you're having difficulties still with your unemployment. There was a great Facebook chat that Jeremy Moss hosted. It was very informational, really helpful, and I was able to direct a bunch of people there, and they got their questions answered, which was wonderful. I just wanted to tell everybody to keep hanging in there, keep staying safe, wash your hands, social distancing, stay safe, stay calm, and look out for your neighbors and be safe. That's it.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by saying thank you for coming and everybody watching and participating. But I also like to say thank you to our belated Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. I think we all called our mothers on Sunday, and I got some flowers for those who may be shut in that are mothers that their other kids may not necessarily get to them. I took a few flowers over to some people that I knew that their children could not make it to their home. So to help make their day a little brighter, because some of the older people are shuttered and, and are scared to go out, and rightly so. But I also like to say to what Mike had said about the businesses earlier. I talked to Flank in Sac. She said that there's some county grants that have been going around, $2,500 and $5,000 grants. Some of our local businesses have received, some of the restaurants. I think Cozy was one of them, and I think that, you look, those are barber shop up here. Young Bloods, Young Bloods may have, may have got some of the money as well. But they're also, the county's looking out for the, some of the smaller businesses that are really hurting the most. And it's nice to see that they looked at Hazel Park as one of those areas where they can help out, as well as the other benefits that Mike McFall is putting together is his group and helping out the smaller businesses. As a small business as well, owner, it is tough. And I, I will, I opened my business back up this week, Monday, and it was nice to see the open arms of everybody. Say, hey, you're open, you're back open. It's very nice. But on the other hand, I'm very cautious wearing a mask all the time at the shop. And I lock my door, and everybody comes to the door. I go up, I talk to them, put the mask on, and come back in. And we do credit card over the phone, so we don't have to be that much involved. And we disinfect the cards. The biggest issue is disinfecting the cards as I pull them in. So, you know, being cautious and aware of your surroundings and how you protect yourself during this pandemic is a big deal. Even though it may have been lighting, lightening up a little, we still have to be cautious. And we'll see how it goes. Be aware, there's other people that may be a little more paranormal about this, and other ones that don't care, walking around without face mask in stores nonchalantly. Unfortunately, we have to deal with those type of idiots in the world. So, but I want to say thank you for, again, for coming out, and I wish everybody a safe week, and we go, we'll see you next week. Thank you. Well, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Clear support?
Smart.
Smart.
All right, guys, have a good night.
Mike, you didn't show us your dog.
Oh, I forgot. Next Tuesday.
Brand new member.